One nation, under God, in the Father, and in the Son.
That's Councilman Campbell can say this case.
Better pray. Pray to your Lord once more again. We come before you just to say thank you. Thank you for what you're doing and what you're going to be doing and what you already did. When you get in this meeting, let us get all on one accord in this we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Three, approval of agenda.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I would like to amend the agenda before we approve. I'd like to, uh, under section five, I'd like to remove five I and K. And under section nine, I'd like to remove A and B. And I would also like to add R under section five, which would be long-term recovery. And I'd like to put that on motion.
We got a motion to amend the agenda. Need a second?
Second.
Got a motion, second. All in favor? Any opposed? Now we need a motion to approve the agenda.
Make that motion.
Got a motion, need a second?
Okay.
Motion in a second. All in favor? Four, approval of minutes, one, two, twenty, twenty, regular meeting requires a motion.
Make the motion approved.
Got a motion in a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor? Five, new business. A, name change from Forest Brook Subdivision to Wallace Lane. Just changing the name with the subdivision?
Just table.
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 Motion table?
Make a motion table.
Got a motion in a second. Any more discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? B, relay for life, twenty-fifth anniversary corporate sponsor. Requires a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that would be a corporate sponsor. They've been relayed for life this have been twenty-fifth year in Dillon County. I'm sorry.
Got a motion in a second? Any more discussion?
Can we let the people know how much we've been doing?
I think they might be down here at twenty-five hundred dollars.
Yeah, it's twenty-five years.
Got a motion in a second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
It's a reason.
Any opposed? C, replacing Gibson Building Roof. Tony Carter, want to know?
As you know, FEMA denied the Gibson Building Roof. The insurance denied it for Hurricane storms. After this last bad rainstorm, we have applied with the insurance one more time and we had to adjust or look at it. There's no guarantee. But I need to pass these out to you. And the second page has the picture of it. If we don't do something pretty soon, we're gonna lose the building.
Now, I want to clarify something. We did bone this before, but that was contingent upon getting reimbursed by FEMA and/or the insurance company. But since that didn't happen, that's why we bring it back. Because we did talk about this. This was back in, I don't know, maybe in March?
Twenty-seven.
But we was gonna get it there. They saying now they're not gonna pay for it.
Right, we were gonna get it done, but that was only contingent upon the insurance company or FEMA reimbursing us. I think it was supposed to be eighty percent. But since they're not, that's why we want to bring it back. So that you understand that there won't be that reimbursement. That's something we're gonna have to decide to do on our own if we're gonna do it.
The actual risk, can we put that on the bond?
We can put that on the bond.
What is the cost to get it repaired?
Fifty-three.
Yeah. And that was just for?
That was fifty-three a year ago. Would it be anymore today if we had another, if we had somebody come and look at it? Would it be any worse for condition than it could cost?
I can't think. That's the main thing.
He said you'd go for the same price.
You got to put up a bid again, Tony, or we're already done.
Well, the bid was submitted in March twenty-seventh of nineteen.
We've already voted for the bids. Am I right?
Yes.
We've already agreed and voted on.
Yeah, but I think if we're gonna start it all over again, we should start the whole process over. You maybe got somebody else want to bid on it now?
Uh, just because we didn't do it, it make it normal and bold.
I agree. What do you think?
I don't, I don't, I don't think you necessarily have to start again. Uh, you have, you have a bid that you accept contingent on insurance paying for it or a portion of it. And low bidders indicating he'll do it for that same bid. I don't think that's a pretty good.
Requires a motion on the places that we're gonna give some.
Where would the money come from?
The money will come from the bond and as of right now, we've only done two purchases with that bond and that's the trash truck and the ten thousand dollar truck.
So the money is there, is it?
Oh, yeah. Money's there.
I make motion fix.
amend motion. Got a motion in a second. Any more discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Five, D, plum case, plum state.
Mr. Chairman and the council, uh, I'm here today, I'm mission to purchase a plum case that will be used, a device in our emergency EOC. This case will, uh, it's a redundant system that in the event your internet goes down, it will reach out and find the closest tower. For example, Marion County internet went down in one of the hurricane two thousand, Ethan Matthew of Florence, and it reached out and found the tower in Florence. We have been borrowing and this thing is one hundred percent reimbursement out of a L E N P G grant money. So once, I'm just asking for permission to buy it and the county get the money back within a few months. At the end of March, we'll, uh, apply for the reimbursement, sixty-two hundred and eighty-four dollars and the money will come back. It's a really good system. Dalton, we borrowed A's one time in a storm. We borrowed Marion County. So we got another application to purchase one for Dillon County itself this year.
That's the cost, sir, sixty-two?
Sixty-two hundred dollars and ninety, sixty-two ninety-four eighty-one.
You say, you know, you might have to put the money up if you had a grant that you pay for it?
Yeah, we'll give us the money.
Just out of curiosity, uh, would not be able to get in on this with you with the same reception and everything?
Uh, I don't think so. Because this system would be actually in the EOC. Now, for example, believe it or not, we use it in Lakeview doing Matthew. It had a cell tower down there. We took one down there that we had borrowed and we were able to use it to support phone calls and, uh, internet service down there.
Question, will some of the other municipalities like Latah and Lakeview be able to do the same application and get one themselves?
Same thing. Uh, it actually could be used for law enforcement if they're in the field to hook up the internet. It actually could be used for GIS to hook up. Actually, you could buy one yourself if you want to buy one, sixty-two hundred dollars and.
And thirty.
But, um, I guess my question is, is it possible for them to get the same kind of grant that you're getting?
They get.
Because I would like for them to be able to look at that as well.
Right.
Just as a courtesy, letting them know what you're doing.
Once we get it, uh, other municipalities can use it. I mean, but in fact, some of the counties have two of them.
I make the motion that, let Mr. Moody first.
Got a motion, need a second? Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Moody. Five, E, purchase of ditcher, Rosen Bridges.
I'm gonna ask for, um, Mr. Steve Moody, who's supervising Rosen Bridges, if he can come forward, um, in case you have any questions for him. But, um, we have two ditches that we've got quotes on. Um, they're about the equivalent. There are a couple of differences. Number one, uh, the first ditcher, uh, we, is from Matic Construction and it is a hundred thirty-eight thousand, uh, for the ditcher. And that is, um, about, we're gonna get on that one. And the one from U.S. Ditcher is a hundred thirty-four thousand, six hundred. So it's about a, um, three and a half thousand dollar difference. But the thing to consider is not just the price. The U.S. Ditcher, it says it takes from a hundred twenty to a hundred sixty days, once we order it, to get it. And if it does take that amount of time, then we're looking at actually being able to use it at the beginning of August. We will lose the whole dry season almost, which is when it's ideal to actually use the machine. The other machine, we can get it in about two weeks. And we'd be able to go ahead and start using it. It does cost about three thousand dollars more. So that's just something for you to consider. Um, you know, as far as which one you would rather use, which one you'd rather get. Now, we would be purchasing this once again from the bond money. Um, so there's plenty of space in there for that as well. That was one of the things that we mentioned before that we had planned for. You got anything you want to add about it?
Well, no, I, when I talked to Mitch Kirk with S.D.O.T., and he was telling me they used to use the, uh, the U.S. Ditcher. They really weren't satisfied with it. So they went to the, um, the RD ninety with, um.
Matic.
Matic.
And that's the one that's a little bit more, three thousand dollars more.
A bit more, but they said it's a better.
Get two or three weeks though.
Then that's the way we can get it right now.
Can I ask the favor of you before you go into further?
Yes, sir.
We didn't even got no idea what you're talking about.
Okay.
Could you explain to us taxpayers what you're talking about, D Y ninety-two and all that stuff?
Well, it's a ditcher, just like Brent's is right. Just say Brent's beside the highway. If you got a ditch, ditch cleaning out. And there's no residents where, what this does, you pull it with a tractor and it slings it there. It digs your ditch, it go up in twelve inches deep in one time. If you want to make it deeper, it would go up to like four foot, but you just had to make more pitch out of it. But it makes it deep so you have, have drainage.
And if I can help you out a little bit with, soon as Mr. Campbell gets through with this. If I can help you, the taxpayers out a little bit, what this does is saves us buying a backhoe. You go down in the ditch.
Yeah, it goes there and, and too, you have a lot of people questioning about, well, if we got a motor grader, if we ditch two on dirt roads. And when you pour dirt out the ditch and you put it aside the road, well, if it's wet like it has been for two years now, we have to leave it aside the road. We can't put it in the road because it's a mess and muddy and stuff. And then that pretty much like traps the water in the road where the water can't get off the road. And this here, if you go down there and clean the ditch out, it just slings it out in the wood kind of, you just level that, then unpile up and nothing. You just spreads it out and you, I mean, you don't have a problem.
You'd be able to ditch a whole lot more faster.
Whole lot more. You can go with it, with that, that ditcher.
Like three miles per day?
Three miles per day.
As opposed to a quarter of a mile a day, which we can do with the, with the backhoe?
With a backhoe or something. And then.
You want to be a quarter of a mile.
No, and then the thing about on the backhoe where it kind of slings that, you've got to take a backhoe most of the time and load it on a truck all the time if there's mud or you can't put it back in the road.
Mr. Moody, how many miles of dirt roads does Dillon County have?
I don't know. I've been told around six hundred.
And that, a dirt road does have two sides to it, my first.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So that ditcher needs to go down one side, probably come back down the other. So if you say six hundred times two, a backhoe, a backhoe would be worn out three or four times.
Yes, sir.
Before you would think about it.
Yeah, it would. Sure would.
And I've seen these ditches work. They do a great job.
They do. They do, they do a real good job, what I've seen too. And there's certain places that, you know, maybe like at a residence where a house is real close to the highway or road. We can't sling it up on the house, you know, so we have to kind of, you know, clean that otherwise. But I mean, most of, most of our roads are like this, you know, where we can handle that with the, with the ditches.
What's the cost of this bike?
Hundred thirty-eight.
In case you're wondering.
Let me ask you a question, Steve. Is this an attachment that goes on two-way?
No, if you put it on a trailer, you pull it behind the tractor. You got to have a machine to pull it.
Which is the next item?
Which is the next item? It's just one piece of equipment.
You hook it to a tractor. You hook it to a tractor, yes, sir.
So you already have a tractor set it with together. We got to buy a tractor also.
Get a tractor too. Because you got to have, we do have tractors, a tractor, but we don't have one with another board department to handle that.
So we're being in the process of buying the tractor also.
Let me add, in case you're wondering, um, up until today, we had seven hundred twenty-one thousand and, uh, left in the bond. So, you know, as we had already mentioned when we first got the bond, it is for equipment for the county that's going to benefit the citizens. And we haven't spent anything yet except for on that trash truck. So this is really the meeting where we're getting some of that equipment.
Well, can he go ahead and explain about the tractor and then we vote one at a time because?
Okay.
I'm asking that, Mr. Barry, because I don't know how you vote for one without.
You got, you got one, you got another.
Yeah. Can he just go ahead and?
Yeah, I think it's time for him to go ahead and explain.
But then we vote for one at a time, I understand. So can you go ahead and explain about the tractor you have to get? Yeah, well, we got to at least have a, a hundred fifteen horsepower tractor. And as heavy as that ditcher is, you need a four-hundred drive with a cab on it. So it's heavy enough to handle the, you know, the ditcher. I have checked with several different places about tractors.
I got the quotes here.
And he's got the quotes.
First quote is from Altman Tractor Company in Florence and Conway, and they want seventy-eight thousand, four hundred. And have you been able to get an indication from them how long it's going to take? They haven't said anything yet?
No, I hadn't had a phone call. He was supposed to call me back. But I did call him when I lived up here today and he told me around three months.
Okay.
But he said he may get it shortly. He's gonna call me back, but I hadn't received a call yet.
So there's a local company, Case, um, International, and they, their price is four thousand dollars more. It's at eighty-two thousand. And, but they can have it tomorrow if we need it. They have it ready immediately, uh, and it's a local company. So it's up to you. Again, you have a local company, ready to go right now.
In case, in case in Dillon?
Yes, in Dillon.
What about John Deere?
Local businesses, we can't.
Well, I mean, time-wise, that's the thing about it.
Right. And again, we, we can't lose time. Now, I, I heard about Johnny, that they had a tractor similar of ninety-eight thousand. It was twenty thousand and it, and it costs a little bit as far as time-wise. It's gonna take a little time. So I didn't even include that one in there.
I mean, it's gonna, it's gonna help everybody if we get this ditcher and this tractor. It's gonna help, I mean, drain the, help ditches where drains, all dirt roads and everything.
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's something that we've known for some time that we've needed because everyone knows that a problem here with our roads. And we know that we have a problem with our roads, but it's because of the drainage. And so we need to get something that's gonna help with that drainage. And, and that's, this is not gonna solve all the problems, but it's gonna go a long way with a lot of our rural roads that we have. So.
So I got one more question. You, you said that we could get the tractor case anytime, tomorrow. All right, then run that back by us again on the, on the tractor.
What was the other tractor? What kind of the other tractor?
Um, one was, um, International and one was, um, Cabala.
Well, we had the New Holland.
New Holland, I'm sorry.
We checked on New Holland, checked on Kabota, checked on, uh, International, and we did check on John Deere, but.
You know, ninety-eight thousand.
But they were ninety-eight thousand for a used tractor, eight, uh, two years old.
I think the tractor state contract, what, twenty-eight percent discount?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's okay.
This tractor has a grain of gear in it.
Grain, that's got it. Got the grain of gear. I think it's on the paperwork up here. It's, um, point.
Point five miles an hour, about zero point five miles.
The machine, the ditcher, it takes a zero point five mile an hour to run that machine. But I think that tractor and that international, I think you'd have got that, the, uh, point one or something like that.
Yeah.
It just will crawl, so.
Y'all got anybody bidding for your money?
Oh, yeah.
And also, um, with the, uh, the ditcher company, they do send someone, you know, with training and that kind of stuff. They'll send that. And just to give you an update, Stevie, reminder, um, you asked about the timelines. The tractors, this tractor could get here immediately. As far as the ditches, one can be here in two weeks and the other one will be about four or five, about five months. And that's the difference there. If we're gonna get the tractor now, we need to go ahead and get the ditcher so we can go ahead and do it during the dry season.
Thank you, Mr. Moody.
On the, Mr. Chairman, on the tractor, I believe it is a state, I'm, I'm, it's my understanding it's a state contract purchase. But I'm not sure the ditcher is. And, um, I believe we may have to seal bids on, on that.
Ditcher?
Like you say, you're not sure.
Well, I'm not sure it's a state contract. I'm, I'm asking Richard and he's saying he's, that the tractor is, that the ditcher is not. If you want to approve the purchase, the purchase contingent, I mean, if we have to get bids, sealed bids, we'll do that. If not, I mean, if you want to do, I'm pretty sure you gotta get sealed bids on this ditcher thing. Based on information I'm being given now.
Would the time factor affect that if we wanted to, what if we said, okay, we want this, a ditcher within two weeks, would that still?
Well, they, they, if they can't bid on something, in other words, they can't provide us a bid on equipment, they can provide a certain amount of time, they can't provide us a bid. So we can tell them, this is for equipment we need in two weeks and if they can't provide it.
How long does that bid have to take?
I'll have to look at it again to tell you.
I mean, you still, you don't have to go with lost bid anyway.
Right. But how long are we gonna open the bids up for? I mean, how long would we have to take bids?
I'll have to look at it too exactly.
Because the other, other issue is with this company, they did have another county looking for, for, for the same ditcher. And I requested that he just hold off for someone else until we had this meeting.
We got to do that. We got to do that.
Right, I know we got to do it, but it just needs to be the shortest amount of time as possible so I can let them know.
We can go ahead and vote to make the purchase?
Well, you don't know how much you're spending yet though. So it'd be hard to do that. If you want to approve, um.
Up to a certain amount?
I think you got to open the bid, you got to open the bid, you got to, you got to open the bids.
So we might as well just table these.
Those, uh, I think so.
Might as well just table both of them at the bottom.
Make the motion to table.
Yes, we have tabled each one separately.
Well, you can make, if the motion is to table E and F.
E and F, fine.
Got a motion to table, uh, five E and five F in a second.
In a second. Any more discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Five, G, landfill mechanic equipment shop expansion and concrete pads ring.
Okay, so, um, I'm gonna have the mechanic, Mr. Cook, if he's here, uh, he'll explain. And we have two quotes, um, for the storage, the, the building. That building in the landfill, that's when you go in on the left, that is sort of a shop, but it's not big enough to do the trucks that he needs to do. And so it needs an expansion, uh, extension to it.
Come up with a pads on it?
Yeah, with a pad is. It needs an extension. And he did get two quotes, um, and one is ninety-one hundred, other one's eighty-nine hundred. Again, you can tell the difference in.
Only two quotes, the difference in two quotes.
Right, the difference in.
The difference is, the two quotes, the difference is the metal. We've got pieces of that building together. And the metal's got a different type of rolls. In other words, if we go with one, it won't match. It likely will lead, it'll probably, maybe not last so long. If you go with the other bid, it'll match. It'll be a perfect ceiling together. And what we got doing in the building is standing twenty foot, put a roll-up door in, a fourteen foot, fourteen foot tall roll-up door. We got the trucks, so it's not gonna start up to thirteen foot.
The one that matches is ninety-one hundred, the one that doesn't match is eighty-nine hundred.
Yeah, and even one of originally built the building that was there now, that's there.
Is that Rosen Bridges? Remember that?
No.
Landfill?
Landfill. The shop over at Landfill.
What are you working on out there? I mean, this is the first time I'm getting along with it.
The trucks, all the trucks at Landfill that we have, have had, that we've been having fewer issues on now, that, that's, these are mechanics working over there.
How you doing?
All right, everybody. That's, uh, all one thing right there.
Yeah, that's it. Um, the, the pad.
What's the pad? What's the ramp?
The pad needs a ramp. You can't just pull the truck up on, on the thing because it'll keep busting up the.
Is that part of the ninety-one?
No, it's not. And, and it's not included in this. And we're not gonna do anything on that because we have to, we're opening that up for, for bids, to pour that concrete.
Okay, so.
Again, do we need to have sealed bids?
It's under, it's under, because it's all guilty.
Ten, yeah, it's only a ten.
Okay.
And they're tabled under the?
They're both under ten.
Yeah, we got to have that ramp, so.
Yeah, we will.
Table this out.
No, this, this needs to, this we can build, it's under ten thousand.
But it's together.
No, it's not together.
It is on this.
Well, it's on here, yeah, but it's not the same item.
I think we're gonna vote for one.
One without the others.
That's what he got quotes for.
That's what.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Quotes for something, so.
All right. It'll, it'll, it requires a motion for the shop expansion.
Well, the man has to have a place to work. If you hire a mechanic and you don't supply him a place to work, then you're sort of putting the cart in front of the horse. So I make the motion to approve ninety-one hundred dollars for the shop expansion.
Got it.
And this is the one that matches, that I guess, or the metal match, yes, that I.
Shouldn't have your problems with it.
Right.
It's just the fact that the metal, different companies make it differently. And the seams, they seem to need to overlay properly. They really need to call it on.
Got a motion in a second?
One second.
Got a motion in a second. Any more discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
Now, Tony, let me make, all this stuff right here is bond related, right?
Bond related, yeah. And I'm keeping up what, what we're spending as we're doing it.
Five, H, purchase of a scale landfill. Sir Earl.
Earl.
While he's coming up, I'm informing that this is a sole source purchase, so.
Okay, so, um, as we know, the landfill scale is how we actually make the money. We actually determine how much money we're gonna make. And the scale that we have now has been having problems and it's been that way for quite some time. Um, we've had it, we've had it fixed, uh, over the past, about two weeks ago, had it fixed. And we had it fixed before that. And it's just, it's soon gonna just go. And we can't, we really can't operate without that scale. And we've talked about it before, but, um, we def, we definitely need a scale over there, like now. The quote that we have is ninety-six thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine. And that is including installation.
Yeah, if, if you don't get them shortly, somebody's gonna fall through. So you can see in the picture where it's about two and a half inches drop. And when the truck comes on it, all that weight's gonna drop on the wreck. It's gonna fall through. The cement's cracking. You can see in the picture where the cement's cracking on it. And if the state man goes down, they ain't gonna shut them down, so they're gonna say. And if the state man goes down, there ain't gonna shut them down, cause then it's like.
Requires a motion.
I make a motion to approve the scales for the landfill, if it can't have, to, to fall through, then we will have.
Mr. Kirby, before we get sacked off for sacking on that. Now, am I, am I clearly understanding this new scale will go on the other side of the building?
Other side of the building, so the truck's gonna go straight out, instead of making its turn to go by, like it does now, have to make a real short turn. It puts a lot of pressure on the truck when it turns around.
How long would it take them, if they were, if we were.
Six weeks.
Six weeks?
Six weeks. Yeah, man, so it'll take about six weeks to get them in.
So with these new scales, everything will be a lot more accurate, too, right?
Same length and everything?
No, they're gonna be longer, they're gonna be wider and longer. They'll be seven foot long and eleven foot wide. We got a motion in a second. Any more discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Kirby. Five J, purchase of tanker for Station Three.
Uh, Station Three, uh, as we know, they, they turned over their, uh, tankers some, a couple of years ago. And we haven't gotten one for them since then, and, um, they have found, they found a couple of weeks ago, a, a, a good used one, right at forty thousand. And between that time and this meeting, that one was sold, uh, the one we'd actually put it on the, on the agenda. But then they come, they come with another one, they found, and these are not really easy to come by, cause usually if they're, uh, tankers. They're, they don't really get used ones that are, that are decent shape, and so it's very hard to find them. And so they did find one that was relatively close by, and it's thirty-nine thousand. Um, again, we've, we've kinda promised them that we were gonna get some for them for years now, and so we have the bond again, and, and that fits our line.
Requires a motion.
Oh, I make the motion. Sorry.
Got a motion in a second?
One second.
Motion in a second, any more discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Five A, repairs for landfill, two thousand nineteen truck.
Okay, so this is not a twenty nineteen truck.
Yeah.
That's just, that's just the number of the truck, two zero nine one nine, so I don't want anybody to get confused, we don't, we're not trying to repair a two thousand nineteen truck. Um, it needs a transmission replacement, the transmission itself is sixty-seven, forty-two, that includes tax, and the labor is seventeen hundred. That'll give a total of eighty-four hundred. Um, the vendors, Florence Mack is for the transmission, and it is a brand new transmission, with a two-year warranty unlimited miles. And the, for installation, that's Shepherd Transmission, they'll be, uh, doing the installation. So, um, this is the fifth of the trucks, right? And so all the other ones are, are in good shape. This will be, this will finish off the, the eighteen-wheelers as far as repairs. From that point on, all we'll be doing is just preventive maintenance, which we, we've gotta handle on with, with the mechanic here, so, um, that will pretty much finish us out. Barring any kind of, you know, mishaps, that'll finish us out with the eighteen-wheelers, that eighty-four hundred right here, so. Earl wants to add anything?
I don't have anything, Mr. Kirby.
No, I just need the truck to haul the track. You see in the pictures right there, show you, the truck be pulled and pulled in and pulled out on that track now. That's why you having so much problem with the truck. It ain't just running up and down the highway, cause if it's running up and down the highway, you won't have no worse problem you have with them trucks, but pushing and pulling. I mean, it's in the mud, and you see they down to the steps in it and everything, so that's the problem you have.
No, that's at Bishopville. That's not, that's at Bishopville. And you know, we have a contract with Bishopville that's, I don't know, it's pretty expensive, nothing like we can get out of that right now. Yeah. So.
Requires a motion. This is just right here.
I make a motion to approve the repairs for this truck.
Got a motion in a second?
One second.
Motion in a second, any more discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Five M, repairs for the landfill.
That, that roll-off needs injectors and water pump replacements, and the vendor was Florence Mack, once again, um. And that together is seventy-six hundred fifty-three dollars and fifty, and thirty-seven cents, and that includes taxes and labor. And that's for the roll-off, you know, that's the third one, right?
Yeah, that's the third one.
And so we have, the other two are working fine, um, we just need to get that third one, uh, so we can, again, be faster and be more efficient.
Got anything else with trouble?
I don't know, I don't know what that meant.
Seventy-six. Requires a motion. Got a motion?
We have to fix our equipment. That's been one problem we've had, is we've fallen behind on repairs, and I make a motion to fix this roll-off, you, you have to collect the trash.
Got a motion in a second?
One second.
Motion in a second, any more discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kirby.
Thank you.
Five N, flag poles at the judicial building.
So we have the judicial center, and unlike any other judicial center I've seen in the state, we don't have any flags. Um, flag poles for the, the US flag, state flag, and Dillon County flag. And winter reached out to three different companies, and it's under ten thousand. Um, one of them is six thousand nine hundred, flag and sign company, out of Columbia, other one is eight thousand one hundred, and the other one is, uh, nine thousand six hundred. But they're all the comparable, um.
Three poles?
Yeah, it's three poles, and that's it, and where'd it wanna go? I, I think that includes, um. Yeah, so. That includes installation.
Richard, do you know, did Laddie use all those poles to take the purchase from the army?
I, I don't know, but I can check. I know at one time they were available, of course.
They gave us, they gave us, we had them from the courthouse, and we might be thankful that they did, but I know that the mayor of Riggland, um. Mayor Riggland, when he was mayor, I know he went and plugged, yeah, Army surplus, they purchased a lot of these flag poles. And I don't know if they have them or not, but I would, I would rather table this.
Yeah, we can do that, we can do that, and then look and check. Yeah.
If we can save twenty thousand dollars. Yeah, well, whatever, but, but if you don't mind, I, I'll make a motion.
Yeah, yeah, we can table that and, and check, and see if we can find.
Got a motion to table, in a second? Motion in a second, any more discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Five O, pit bull and dangerous animals.
I'm gonna ask, um, Purnell to come up, Mr. Purnell.
Good afternoon.
Thank you.
It's been recently that Dillon County's been receiving a lot of calls and references to pit bulls. These in the neighborhood, and then unpopular tens. And I came up and I spoke with the administration and reference to this, and we found out that they have been, in nineteen, in two thousand seventeen. Council passed an ordinance, but we never enforced it, and we all never contacted them, they have control. So I'm here today to try to find out what angle we need to go, if we need to start registering these pits, or we need to enforce it. Where are these people who got these pits? It requires a six-foot fence, cement. But until I get some authority to enforce it, it's kinda hard to do the job, you know? So I need to know what you all are gonna do, all the parts that you passed in two thousand seventeen.
Let me just say, the ordinance was passed, that's, they've done their part.
Okay.
So, you know, I'm just telling you, we, we're going to enforce it, and what I do wanna just let everyone know is that we are going to enforce this. Um, there's no need for us to delay, um, much further, we do need to make sure that we have the, the tags, I, I know I told you to look for tags and, and that kinda thing, and. We need to implement a system, uh, of enforcing it, and so, but we are going to enforce it, we're gonna enforce it in full, because, um. As you all know, it doesn't take but once for a dangerous animal to get loose and someone's mauled, and sometimes people lose their lives. And I'm not gonna be responsible for having an ordinance and not trying to enforce it, and someone loses their lives, uh, uh, about it. So we're going to enforce it, and that, this is really, this is really just an announcement, and we're gonna send out a notice to the public, uh, probably newspaper and elsewhere. That we are enforcing and how we're going to enforce it, but council's done their job, they passed it in twenty seventeen, so it's up to us, we are going to enforce it. And that's really why I wanted him here, to just explain what it was and the fact that we are going to enforce that, um. We're gonna send out a notice, exactly what, what date, it'll probably be April first, that's something we'll kinda meet about and figure out how we're gonna best do that. But we're gonna enforce that, and that's really all it is to it. You guys have already passed the, passed the ordinance.
Look, dude, is that the same thing the town of Dillon?
The town of Dillon, they have you to come in and register your dog, the pit bull.
Can you update us on what the ordinance was, kinda Phil, seeing the pit bulls along?
Well, I have a copy of the ordinance, but I wasn't present during the negotiation with the ordinance, but it just simply says, a pit bull. Based on the orders that you all passed, that, that you cannot allow them to run aloof, run around loose, and you have to have a six-foot fence, you have to have a cement. If you do not do that, then it's a misdemeanor, and it's a distraction of the general, how much of a fine that he will put on it.
You saying it just can't be out on a chain somewhere? Out of the chain?
I mean, if somebody, no, no, it's saying, it's basically you saying, if someone is allowing them to run aloof, run, run loose. I mean, that's up to whatever y'all discuss, if somebody got him tied in their yard to a chain. The understanding I got here.
As long as they say you put, as long as they put down a fence, it's a four-point penalty.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, it just can't be out on a chain.
I'm here, that, first of all, everyone has to register their pit bulls, and it describes pit bulls as Staffordshire Bull Terrier, American Staffordshire Terrier, and American Pit Bull breeds. Um, and they have to be registered, it's a small registration fee of only five dollars, but, uh, a fence is required, it must be six feet. Um, and it must have a, a area less, not less than one hundred square feet. And a license expectancy of not less than ten years, so it must be a, a proper fence, something that is gonna hold, hold these dogs. And they're prohibited on the streets and public right of ways unless they're with the owner, and it says on a chain, wearing a collar and registration tag. So all of those things are required, um, and I'm not bringing up new legislation, this is something that you guys have already passed, I'm just reading what you passed in twenty seventeen, so.
Dog pins gotta be cemented?
Yes. Dog's gonna dig out.
And as I recall, during the special, the reason was so they can't dig under the fence.
Yeah, but this is, I mean, if, 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 if we don't like the, the ordinance, we have to change it, but it's, it's already, it's already been voted on, and again, that was twenty seventeen. We just have never, uh, implemented it and never, um, enforced it, so. But that's it, we just.
Well, I'd love to say this, now they four hundred and seven square miles in Dillon County, there's no way one man gonna be able to.
Well, okay.
I don't, I don't think you'll be able to go out and look for them.
No, you're not gonna look.
You get complaints.
But, right.
You got to, I mean, that's why.
We got them that day.
And, and for them, they, they, we got dog patrol going on all day, I mean.
Yeah.
You're not gonna be able to do that, but when, when complaints, and if they're not compliant, they've got to be taken.
Now, what I, what I will say is, if you know of any past complaints that you know directly have been violated, then yeah, you check those out. But you're not gonna have to kind of just ride around the county looking, and it, also, some of this falls on the general public. If you see these things, you know, it's not about not wanting to be the person who tells on someone else, it's about wanting to be the person that may save someone else's life. So, um, if you see these things happening, if you see someone with dogs, again, you just call Animal Control, and now we have, we know we have the ordinance here. And we're gonna be enforcing it, you know, by the letter of the law, so I just wanna let everyone know.
Five P, Dillon School and School Foundation.
Good afternoon, council. Uh, it's the Dillon Historic School Foundation, and it should say, update, that's what I'm here to do today, to update you on what we've done in the past few days. Uh, and it won't take me about about five minutes, I wrote it so I could read it, so I wouldn't lose my thoughts, okay? And this is a real switch from what you've been talking about already, okay? So I thought I'd gotten on the wrong agenda, that I'm not talking about tractors and things, anyway. This is my third opportunity to speak before the Dillon County Council. My first appearance here was to ask you to support the Dillon Historic School Foundation's efforts to protect and restore the former Dillon High School campus. A two-block area within easy walking distance of where we are right now. Since that time, and with very little, if any, support from the city of Dillon or from Dillon County. We have on our own security grant from HUD, the US Department of Housing and Urban Development, and this was recently announced on Tuesday, February the eighteenth, on the front page of the Dillon Herald. In the fall of twenty nineteen, several members of DHSF formed a subgroup of that organization, adopting the name DHSF Presents. And began moving in a new direction. This small group decided that now was the perfect time to begin restoring cultural events by exploring possibilities of bringing professional entertainment to Dillon County. Taking a leap of faith for our community, we booked two professional productions for Dillon's citizens. Through a booking agent, we signed two binding contracts and scheduled the original Drifters and comedy extravaganza performances in Dillon. Seeking community support, several attempts were made in the fall of twenty nineteen to, to appear before this council to introduce you to our new project. And my group eventually secured a place on your January twenty twenty agenda. On January twenty ninth, twenty twenty, I, along with two other members, Alicia Berry and Mary Miller. Came here to request Dillon County Council's financial support for this new venture. We made our presentation, distributed information and promotional flyers, and entertained questions from you. Unfortunately, our efforts failed. The report of your January meeting was printed in the Dillon Herald on February twentieth, and editor Finkley has stated that, in response to our request for your support. Quote, council took no action on their presentation, unquote. Well, DHSF Presents' first event, this magic moment with the, with the original Drifters, was held here in Dillon on Friday, February the twenty-first. Please correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm pretty sure that none of you were there to see the original Drifters performance. It was an amazing event, a widely recognized, talented, and professional group enhanced by professional light and sound. It was great, just ask anybody who was there. I've been truly disappointed by the lack of support from county council, as well as the absence of council members and the audience. This was a perfect opportunity to show our citizens and out-of-town visitors that Dillon at its best. With the exception of Representative Jackie Hayes, no other elected. With the exception of Representative Jackie Hayes, no other elected public officials attended this inaugural concert, none. There were patrons there from at least thirteen towns in three states who came to Dillon to see the original Drifters. These visitors came from as far north as Greensboro, North Carolina, as far west as Rock Hill, South Carolina, as far south as Tampa, Florida, and ten other towns scattered in between. No less disturbing to me was the lack of diversity in the audience last Friday night. I usually attend the opening event at Carolina Civic Center in Lumberton, North Carolina. I saw the original Drifters there two years ago, and that historic theater was filled, every seat from the front row to the back wall of the balcony. The audience was a perfect blend of Robinson County's three dominant ethnic groups, blacks, whites, and Lumbee Indians. Somehow, I expected the same here, but that did not happen. I am genuinely puzzled by that, as well as the lack of support from the community, including this council, and from so many local citizens who bemoan the fact, there's nothing to do here in Dillon. There was something to do on Friday, February the twenty first, and there will be something else to do on April twenty fourth. With our group's determination and with County Council's decision to support us, there will be something special to do in our town for many years ahead. And I brought, we have these inaugural programs. I want to give you a program on Friday. This is the program from the original Drifters on Friday. Yeah, thank you. And also, I'm going to leave what I just read, copies of that with me, Stevens. And if any of you out there would like to get one of these, showing what's coming, what was here, and what's coming next with Doggie Partners Theater Group, I'll put those up. Thank y'all very much. Any questions or?
I have a question.
Yes.
How many people, um, attended the, the last?
Probably about a hundred and twenty. I'm going to leave some of these out in the lobby. Thank you.
Now, do you have, do you have a specific request? That, do you have a specific request that has here, requires a motion?
I will show you, Mr. Inhale. I did send packets to two of you, stock and load. That shows you, oh, that.
Right, but do you have a specific request at this council?
I would say, uh, I would like to, I would like to donation.
What did you present?
Okay, I didn't know. City of Dillon, the city of Dillon, uh, gave us two thousand five hundred dollars. And, uh, was hoping you'd like it. I was hoping you would like it.
I don't have a vote, I'm council, I am here.
That's why, that's why, Ben, I wanted to look at the back of the program, see what the sponsors and the supporters look like. We left that information with them back in January, and we didn't know what to expect in return, in reply. That's why we put all this in the lead, okay? So what's the result?
There's a donation that says requires a motion.
These programs are expensive. The two programs for this year that you see on that thing cost us like seventeen thousand. They're binding contracts. And we haven't reached that. We were expecting more people. Had we filled the auditorium, we would have taken in fifteen thousand for just tickets. But like I said, I don't think anybody here was there. And it was, it was- Well, I'm just saying, I don't think anybody here was there.
Well, I, I, I do want to say, you know, we all can't make every event. And some of us do have a lot of other commitments. Um, I, I also had other commitments, uh, that night myself. Um, but I'm sure, when possible, you'll get some support. It's not a fact of no one wanting to support you. I mean, that's kind of how it came across. We, we want to support you, but, you know, we will-
This is something we're trying to do for the community.
Well, I understand, but it, it's not as if we're just, you know, dismissing you.
Okay, thank you.
It's, that, that, I don't want you to come away with that opinion or that impression that we're dismissing you. Um, these councilmen, they talk very highly of your event, so it's not as if they don't want to support you.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to-
Appreciate that, thank you. Any other questions or concerns? I made a motion, I'm going to table it.
Got a motion to table it in a second. Any more discussion? Five Q, recreational quest.
Okay, the first one is, um, Fort Chapel, Mission, Bad Church. Um, they're having a gala with me, a formal event on Saturday, May the second, twenty twenty, at five p.m. over Lake Creek with you to give a donation.
That's it.
Right.
I can give you two.
You don't have that.
You don't have that.
Thank you.
You want a guy?
Maybe some along here, huh?
If you imagine it, the owner is gone.
It's gone, it's gone, and why else?
If I see Miss Joseph Freeman smiling and laughing, she appreciates it.
Okay, the next one is, um, open eyes would welcome you today at bat.
I give her, I give fifty on that.
Okay, um, open eyes would welcome you today at bat, follows, and wants you to donation for half the season. Um, Archie Scott just gives two hundred dollars. I haven't more, I don't have any more. Okay, this one is from Jack Scott, wants to give, um, five hundred dollars to the Miracle Temple Church of Lakeview. Why else? Okay, and then we have, um, when it's a project, a fundraiser that's happening at the Dillon Church of God, um, this will be on March twenty eighth, twenty twenty, fundraiser project is in yet with the building for church sanctuary. Okay, that's all I have. That's all.
Five R, Long Term Recovery Group.
I'm going to ask Mr. Ken Smith, who's chair of the Long Term Recovery Group, uh, to come, um, to get some information about some news that he's received from Syceline Recovery Group.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Council. I wanted to make the announcement also about, uh, for what's happening in support here in Dillon County. Uh, as you know, hurricanes have hit us back ever since the floods from two thousand fifteen, sixteen, seventeen. With our roof, we have instrumented to recover and replace seventy-three roofs in the towns in Dillon, Lincoln, and Latta, and the whole county. We also repaired over a hundred and forty-two homes with their floors, roofing, and supplies. And you might see us around, we've given out food and other things. We've been instrumental in bringing that attack because last time we got hit, as you paid attention, it was a state register where Marion County got most of the money. I introduced the council, um, Tony, um, Clyburn, to come to Columbia with me. We want to start a state director, and we also met with them. They wanted to just allow and register us to handle for the zip code of two nine five three six, and just doing that. Well, after the announcement today, they're going to do the whole county, we're going to be receiving out of the three counties, uh, between Latta, Dillon, Lakeview, Marion County, some of their counties, and Williamburg County. A register has been signed for a hundred and fifty-seven million. We're going to receive eighty percent of that, those three counties. We're getting ready to talk about doing houses all over. They're going to make that public announcement through media. I come today to just bring that announcement to you guys. But here in Dillon County, we're going to be doing what they call public intakes from power disasters. We have five locations secured. This is all we bringing out into public. Uh, mobile intake starts March the third through the fifth at Man and Baptist Church. Then they will, uh, be at March the seventeenth to nineteenth, McCoy Chapel. March the twenty-fourth and twenty-sixth, at Greater Highway Christian Church in Latta. March the thirty-first through April the seventh, at Saint Matthew. And April the fourteenth through sixteenth, in the Gibson Building in Dillon County. So what that means for us guys, that, uh, know that the county is, is harnessing on infrastructure, building and recovery is a part of that. When we repairing these homes, we're building up the infrastructure. We're also preparing to have a, uh, summit, an educational disaster summit, that's going to take and bring people together, and I hope to have you guys' support. So what I asked from that, you guys, is just support, uh, letting people know it's getting out in the world. But we're getting and bringing it, we're changing one house at a time and helping many residents in the county. And this is free of them. This is for the people that FEMA have denied, and for those agencies, and we continue to do now. We have actually eight houses in process of getting done through those apartments. And, um, I like to say that we're getting the work done, and we need more contractors in Dillon to pay attention to us. Because I say that, when we first started, contractors in Dillon would not give us any attention because they say we're too small. But now we've grown. And the now some numbers that we've done, and our numbers, we repaired right now, uh, at a total of about six hundred and forty-two thousand dollars that we spent in roofs and repairs. We brought acquisitions and of grants and materials to Dillon County of two point six million. So we continue to grow as a little company. We've been three years, and we're moving forward, we're moving that. Um, just got nominated for the citizenship award by Duke Energy. So people outside are seeing what we're doing here. And also, I'm in the nomination now, I want to let everyone know, for the Phoenix, Arizona Award, which is a state, uh, award that's going to be presented in D.C. by the United States Small Business Administration. And that's been doing through Dillon County. We just need to spread the news of more things that's positive than the negative. Dillon is the great place to live, guys, and we don't come together enough to talk about it. So, Council, I just want the support of putting the word out. That's pretty much it. Any questions?
Kenny, I appreciate what you're doing. I know what you're doing. Y'all are doing a great job, and I appreciate that.
Thank you, thank you. And, uh, Mr. Finkley was there the day we gave support, he came out. We actually, uh, came to the, the, the calling of Latta when they had the water problem. So we brought in water. And, uh, the state, just got a call from the state, uh, agency, and Mr. Mosin, though, they have three hundred and ten pallets of water that they're willing to give us what we want, we just have to schedule the pickup. So stuff is out there, MRA's as well. So anytime you need anything, we just need the county to continue to know, because we've just been here three years, and people still considering asking, not knowing we're here. And we just know that validity, that you have the support from you guys, because they don't want to need to know we're not a scam, that we're here to help them, that we are a county-supported agency.
Do you help people in the county, or just towns?
The whole county, man. We went out through the whole county. And, and matter of fact, because of some of the demographics and how the zoning is, some people have, um, Nichols, uh, addresses and cell addresses. They get help by us because they pay taxes to Dillon County. So it all depends on where you land and where you stay. But we've been all over the county. I've seen roads now that I never knew existed in Dillon going out to deer. I lose reception in some of the places that's way out. So we have been all over, everywhere. And, uh, coming up right now, we have a, a house in Latta. What we doing, we doing mobile home replacements. If it's so bad that the mold can resist, we come in, and if they approve and vet it out through the program, we replace that mobile home. We have a house getting replaced in Latta, and we're going to have a house getting replaced in, um, Dillon, out in Little Rock area. So we're all over. We built a house, uh, right across the street from the jailhouse. That house was instrumented by us partnering with all different partnerships and agencies. We host our meeting every first Tuesday, um, at the Dillon County Long Term Recovery Group. Then all agencies come into town to talk about how we can make it better. And that's what we do. All right? Thank you.
Six, old business, A, employee bonus policy.
Uh, this was brought before you at the last meeting, and I, I think there was some interest in changing the structure, um, so that employees could get, um, one-twelfth of the bonus for every month, if it's a new hire, for every month they've served, and upon twelve full months of service, they've been entitled to the full bonus. So this is the language drafted to accomplish that, um, for you, for you to consider.
Just, just so, to be clear, we did meet with the, with the executive committee, um, and that's the recommendation I, I can share with you. The recommendation is to have the bonuses for every month that you're working with the county, you get one-twelfth of the bonus up to a year. And that way, you'll know what to expect. There won't be any type of, you know, did I get one, or did that person over there get one? We'll know what we're going to get.
That's the only fair way to do it, because if I'd worked a year, and somebody came in two months, and they got the same bonus I got, I wouldn't feel too good about it. So I like it right here.
Well, some of you guys.
Requires a motion.
Make the motion to approve this call.
Need a second?
A second.
Any more discussion?
Well, number seven, I'm taking over for the chairman, he hasn't got other things he's got to do today. Uh, Richard, can you hear what's the financial form?
Yeah, if you got it, yeah. This is the balance as of February twenty-fifth. Our general fund, we currently have five million, four hundred and twenty thousand, eighty-two dollars. Out of that, we've got accounts payable of two million, one hundred and eighty-five thousand, four hundred and thirty-two dollars. At least a net available balance in our general fund of three billion, two hundred and thirty-four thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars.
Everybody got any questions? Everybody got a question? Appreciate the conversation. James, I need a minister to report.
Good evening, everyone. I have a few things I want to mention to you. First of all, I do want to talk about another ordinance that had been passed, I'm not sure the date here, uh, two thousand and nine, and that's the hospitality tax ordinance. Now, what we originally thought was that hospitality tax did not have a penalty, but there is actually one in here. And I do want to read that, uh, and make it clear to, to the general public, that we're going to start enforcing that, um, the hospitality tax. As you know, the hospitality tax is for businesses that sell food, hot prepared food, and they are to collect, uh, two percent on the sale of that prepared food, and submit that to the county as hospitality tax. It's been that way for over a decade, but we have not really been receiving that tax from, from all entities. Not all businesses have been submitting that, and that has been a problem for us. But I, so I do want to read just a certain part of that. It says, in section three, "Any tax not timely paid to Dillon County by the collecting vendor shall be subject to the penalty of five percent of the amount due for each month or portion thereof until paid. The failure of the vendor to collect the tax from the customer shall not relieve that vendor from making the required payment." So whether they're collecting it or not, they still owe that money. And the failure of any vendor-
And "The failure of any vendor to remit to Dillon County the taxes provided in this ordinance shall constitute a misdemeanor punishable by a fine, not to exceed the sum of $500, or imprisonment of nowhere in 30 days in jail, or both. The Dillon County summons may be used for violations of this ordinance." So, I, I just wanna make it clear, and I've talked about this before, that, uh, now we do have, we have located where we have the penalty, and we're gonna be enforcing that, um, because we do have businesses in Dillon County who are not paying the, I'm not gonna get into any specifics, who are not paying the hospitality tax. And it just isn't fair, because we do have a lot of businesses who are paying it. And if, you know, we know how it is, you wanna be the only one paying the taxes. If you're gonna pay your fair share, you'd rather everybody else pay it too. So, we're gonna be implementing that, or enforcing it a little bit better. Any questions about that, from the council? All right? The next thing I wanna talk about again is the gravel project. It is in progress, it's been progressing. Um, we have finished, um, Cushing Plantation Drive, I believe it is, and down near Latta. And, you know, it's, it's going well. I, I do wanna mention one thing, though. I do get some phone calls, um, and I get some complaints. And the complaints are not that we're doing it, the complaints are about why my road isn't getting done. And I'm gonna say this for at, at least a tenth time. Not every road is gonna be first. We're gonna get around to them. Just because your road wasn't done, and you see another road that's done, doesn't mean we forgot about you. It just means we can only do one at a time. We're in a, in a rainy season right now, and we can't even get to rock the gravel during the rain, and we can't really, you know, and, and then once it rains, as, as Mr. Moody will tell you, we're extremely busy, we're doing other things. The same crew that has to do the gravel is the same crew that has to do the ditches. We all know how important that is. That's the same crew that has to scrape the roads. That's the same crew that's cutting the side of the roads, and picking up trash on the side of the roads. That's the same crew that has to do the dirt on top of the C and D portal in landfill. So, they're extremely busy. These guys aren't just sitting around. They, they have a lot of work to do, and when we have days where we're caught up with the roads, then we go get gravel, and we go to the next road and, and do that one. So, we're working very hard to get that done. We're working as fast as we can work. And I would appreciate citizens can be just a little patient, we're gonna get to your roads. Now, we're not gonna do every road in Dillon County, but we're gonna do the worst ones, and, and we're, and that's gonna be determined for the tenth time as well, by the CTC. They determine, they make the final determination of which roads are done. It's not political, it's not your councilman, you don't have to get mad at them, it's not my office, it's the CTC, and they have a system for determining which roads are gonna be done first. It's based on how bad they are, based on how many people live there, and the type of usage and traffic. You know, school buses and emergency vehicles, you know, we, we have to pay close attention to those kind of roads. So, we're gonna get to them, but be patient with us. Any questions about the gravel project? Okay? Last thing, we talked about the PDR TA, and, you know, with council, we did get that funding approved. And I just want the people to know, because we've had a lot of concern about that. It's coming, uh, it hasn't been refused or anything. We are going to get that, uh, put in motion very soon. I can't give you a specific date. We tried to do that before, but, you know, when you have projects like this, things happen. You have other agencies involved, and they have the right to pull money back or to delay money. And those things happen when you're talking about projects like this. I wanna say, late spring, we're gonna go ahead and get started. The PDR TA, PDR TA Board will meet tomorrow afternoon, and they will give us a little more information about that, which I'll share with the public once that gets, uh, gets shared with me. Uh, other than that, we do have the Presidential Preference Primary on Saturday, and I just wanna urge people, if, if that's what you wanna do, you know, go ahead and vote. We will have the precinct, they'll be ready. We have the voting machines, that's gonna be the first time that they're gonna be used countywide, the new voting machines. Uh, if you don't know how to use them, you can always go over to, probably tomorrow will be too late, but you, you go over there, and they'll show you what to do with them. And I just want the county council to know, we'll, we'll be ready Saturday, everything will be in place, we have that already, uh, put together, so. Any questions?
Mr. Clyburn, just, just kinda tell the public what's going on. When I first got a lick, I got orders passed that we would turn down some abandoned houses, and some of them since then have asked me why we have quit. Can you kinda share some of them, then, why we have them and turning them out?
Well, I'm gonna add another thing to that list of the Rosen Bridges Group. They're the same crew that does that. And so, we honestly haven't had time to, we only have a few houses that are on that list. Now, before I got here, it was $300 that you had to pay to the county. Now, somewhere during that time period, I'm not sure, maybe about two years ago, it was raised to $1,000. And, so what that means is, not only do you have to have the proper type of house, which it means it's more than 50% deteriorated, and has been abandoned, but you have to pay $1,000, and the county will come in and tear that property and dispose of it. Now, that money has to be paid, and so that's one thing. So, we only have had a couple since that time that have paid that money, and that's why some of that has stopped. Um, the other reason again is because, and we do have one house that, that we're looking at, going ahead and getting done, but we have to get some free time for the guys at Rosen Bridges. Um, I mean, they're stretched out, they've been working overtime, so that's one of the reasons.
I understand this, you know.
Yeah, I, well, I'm, I'm talking to you and to the general public. That's one of the reasons, is because they're just really busy.
And there are also a couple homes that we were gonna ta- take in the litigation, have dealt with, and until we get the resources available to do it, we don't wanna have the process to, to have that done and then wait a year, tear them down. If we say they need to be torn down, we need to have the resources available to do that immediately. Uh, if they're safe, if they're unsafe, if it's not healthy, if it's that important, we need to have, make sure the resource is available to take care of it as soon as we do that. So, when we get the availability, we'll bring the action on those, you know, the ones I'm talking about, and try to get those taken care of as well. Anything else?
All right. Nine, C. An ordinance to amend an ordinance to establish a procurement code for Dillon County.
I was, uh, asked to draft a revision to this ordinance. Of course, the procurement code is an ordinance, so in order to amend it, you have to amend the ordinance. And so, this simply clarifies, um, that bids have to, that, that procurement code applies to all work Donald County equipment or property, regardless of whether the county's paying for it, or whether their insurance proceeds reimbursing the county, or if the insurance company is directly paying the contractor. And that was the understanding I, I had from a few of the councilmen that they wanted to change, and that's why we drafted it, for your, your consideration, best entire council.
Thank you.
Quires, looks, wait a minute, wait a minute.
This is first reading.
That's what I'm saying, that's, this is first reading, but that, that's typically says that anything that's got, any one that's got to be bid, it's got to be bid on.
Well, it's subject to the procurement code. Some things you bid, some type of things you don't. But if it's over a certain amount, you know, you have to bid it, some things you have to seal bids for. And we're just, what this does is simply adds insurance projects to the procurement code. It clears up the fact that insurance projects are part of the procurement requirements in Dillon County.
Do you have to have certain credentials in order to make these bids?
Well, the procurement code doesn't say that, but now, your city, if the cities, county may have requirements about who have, you know, you may have to be a contractor, but the procurement code does not require that.
It don't require it.
It does not. But again, cities, if there's, there's work to be done in the city on the building there, if they're gonna require, I believe they'll require someone with certain kind of credentials to do that kind of work.
Now, now, next question I got, where would the bids be sent in to?
To the county.
And how is those bids, um, is, is, is open or discussed? Who, who gets to open the bids?
Richard does. I'm asking.
It'll be done the same way all other bids are done. If, if that, if this passes.
It's supposed to be sealed bids, and then he opens them.
Requires a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Motion is second. Motion is second. Any more discussion? All in favor? Ten appointments. Hey, planning commission district one, James Campbell.
Nobody's just standing.
Number eleven, executive session, legal matter lawsuit with AWS, requires a motion.
Make the motion going to executive session.
Is, motion is second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? No action taken. Number 12, German, requires a motion.
We adjourn.
Make that a motion is second. Motion is second, all in favor? Vote. Meet now.